The council will now meet in closed session to discuss the denial of issuance of a taxi cab license as allowed by RCW 42.30.1401. The formal issuance of an order granting, suspending, revoking, or denying any license permit or certificate to engage in any business, occupation, or profession, or to any disciplinary proceedings involving a member of such business occupation or profession, or to receive a license for a sports activity, or to operate any mechanical device or motor vehicle where a license or registration is necessary. The council will be in closed session until 5:00 PM. The council is expected to take final action following the closed session. I call us back to order. Are we ready to make a motion?
I move that we support the decision by staff.
Second.
And can we take a roll call vote, please? Counselor Kathy Downer?
Yes.
Counselor Vicki Lowe?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rachel Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Harmony Rutter?
Yes.
And Counselor Nicole Hartman?
Yes.
Motion passed. Five zero. The council will now meet in closed session to discuss non-uniform labor negotiations as allowed by RCW 42.30.1404A. Collective bargaining sessions with employee organizations, including contract negotiations, grievance meetings, and discussions relating to the interpretation of the application of a labor agreement. The council will be in closed session until 5:45 PM. The council is not expected to take final action following this closed session. This closed session is adjourned. The regular session will begin at 6 o'clock PM. Welcome, everyone, to the October 28th council meeting. I will call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Alrighty, can we do roll call, please? Counselor Kathy Downer?
Here.
Counselor Dan Butler? Excused. Counselor Vicki Lowe?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Rachel Anderson?
Present.
And Mayor Branda Janice is excused. Counselor Harmony Rutter?
Here.
Counselor Nicole Hartman?
Here.
And can I get a motion to excuse Counselor Butler and Mayor Janice?
So moved.
I second it. I second it.
Thank you so much. And by order of unanimous approval, if there is any objections, please state your opposition. Okay, they are excused. And any changes to the final agenda, or can I get a motion to approve?
I move we approve the final agenda.
I second it.
Ah, by unanimous approval? Any objections? Seeing none, the final agenda is approved. And we will be moving on to the ceremonial section of our meeting. So I will be reading a proclamation for the 2024 Life Saving Award for Officers McBride, Milden, please correct me if I pronounce your names wrong. Okay, and Officer Moon. So I will read these, and then I will come up and hand them to you, and shake your lovely hands. Be it known that Officers Devon McBride, Ella Milden, and Chris Moon have been recognized with a 2024 Life Saving Award. On Tuesday, October 8th, 2024, at approximately 23:02 hours, officers were dispatched to a report of an assault on the highway located at US Highway 101 and East Washington State while en route. Sorry, while en route. Officers were given updated information that the incident might also be a car versus pedestrian collision. Officer Milden arrived first and observed a female doing chest compressions on a male in the middle of the highway. She immediately checked for a pulse and started life-saving measures. As other officers and sheriff's deputies arrived, they took over chest compressions. Officer Milden retrieved her AED and handed it off to Officer McBride, who placed the pads on the victim while Officer Moon and others continued CPR. Officers and deputies continued life-saving measures for approximately seven minutes until EMS staff arrived on scene and took over patient care. Once relieved from patient care, the on-scene officers and deputies started to document the scene to assist the Washington State Patrol in the investigation, as well as offer support and assistance to family members on scene. Due to the nature of the victim's injuries, he was transferred to Harborview Medical Center via Life Flight. Officer McBride, Officer Milden, Officer Moon, and deputies played a huge part in keeping the victim alive until medics arrived on scene with advanced life support capabilities. Officer McBride's, Officer Milden's, and Officer Moon's actions are directly responsible for saving a person's life. Their actions mirror our agency's mission, vision, and values, and warrant recognition in accordance with Squim Police Department Policy Number 1030.4 for a job well done.
You can go right ahead. You did great. Do that in one moment. First of all, I'd like to give the council a little bit of information is we didn't expect to be back so soon. We try not to make a habit of it, but it is a bit unpredictable to know when you're going to do this. So for background information, we usually present two to five life-saving awards annually. And I think we hit that in the last couple of months. So I do think it's important to recognize officers for saving a human life because there's no way you can put a value on that. So the recognition that they receive for an invaluable service is well deserved. As you can imagine, when they showed up on scene on October 8th, it was chaotic and violent. And that's an understatement based on what we saw and what the investigation revealed. But these three immediately went to work on what the number one priority was and was saving someone's life. I'll credit Sergeant Turner, or sorry, Larson, I'm really sorry, who was one of the sergeants on scene and had to just kind of take care of a lot of other stuff. Like, this is in the middle of a highway, and these officers' safety so that they could do their job. And seven minutes is an accurate number. So performing CPR for seven minutes is no small task. And I did some research, and doing so, immediately performing CPR can more than double the chances of someone's survival than if they had to wait for seven minutes. So them being on scene immediately because they're already out on patrol definitely helped save this gentleman's life. I'll also add that while this investigation was going on, because Squim is a small community and we get to meet and know a lot of people, it turned out we actually knew several of these family members. So that makes things just that much more personal. And I hope they're doing well. A little plug to the Squim Dungeon S Hospital Guild. They recently approved a grant for us. So most of our officers had AEDs in their vehicles, which these officers used that night. But with that grant, all of our officers will have AEDs in their vehicles. And it would be a little history on these guys. It's not the first time that they've received life-saving awards. Devon's been with us since 2014, full-time. Before that, he was a reserve. After a little stint in Port Townsend Police Department, he decided to come home. But in 2022, he received a life-saving award after finding an unresponsive male and performing CPR. To be outdone, Officer Ella Milden, on her very first day of patrol, her and her partner pulled a person from a burning building that couldn't make it out under their own tower. And she also received a life-saving award for that. So thank you, council, for the recognition of these officers and job well done.
Alrighty, so I will move on to the next proclamation. All right. This is our Veterans Day proclamation. Whereas on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month of 1918, the armistice agreement was signed between the Allied Nations and Germany, ending the war to end all wars. And whereas originally celebrated as Armistice Day, starting in 1919, Veterans Day was officially established June 1st, 1954, as a day to honor American veterans of all wars, then becoming a federal holiday in 1968. And whereas generations of men and women have served our nation to protect democracy and the liberty of freedom for us all. And whereas Veterans Day is the day set aside to thank and honor all those who served honorably in the military, in wartime or peacetime, to acknowledge that their contributions to our national security are appreciated, and to underscore the fact that all those who served, not only those who died, have sacrificed and done their duty. And now therefore, I, Rachel Anderson, Deputy Mayor of the City of Squim, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2024, as Veterans Day, and encourage our citizens to recognize the valor, courage, and sacrifice of those who have served our country. Any comment from council?
Thank you.
I haven't had very many veterans that I've known personally. But that being said, I am very forever grateful for anybody who serves the country. It is such an honorable thing to do that is so much bigger than yourself. And I think that's a beautiful thing. So thank you. Alrighty. Our next proclamation is for Native American Heritage Month. Alright, whereas since time, and memorial Native Americans, indigenous people living on these lands have provided stewardship of the people, lands, and resources here. And whereas Native American people and tribal governments have made invaluable contributions that have shaped our country, state, and city. And whereas throughout the history of the United States government, Native traditions, practices, and ceremonies were made illegal, and assimilation efforts caused great harm to Native people. And whereas in 1975, the Indian Self-Determination and Education Act was enacted by the federal government in support of tribal self-determination. And whereas in 1978, the American Indian Religious Freedom Act was enacted by the federal government to begin to undo the incredible harms caused by Code of Indian offenses that had been in place since 1883. And whereas we honor the resilience of Native people, the Sklalums, Klalums, other Salish and indigenous people living in our community, who not only survived the oppression of their values, language, and other cultural ways, but have worked to bring the values and practices of their ancestors into today. And whereas we honor the 574 tribal nations in the country who continue exercising their inherent sovereignty as vital members of the overlapping system of governments in the United States. And whereas we also support tribal sovereignty in upholding the federal government's solemn trust and treaty responsibilities. And with enlightened awareness of the local history of this area, we commit to a continued partnership and collaboration as two sovereigns. And now therefore, I, Rachel Anderson, Deputy Mayor of the City of Squim, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month. We commit to a continued partnership and collaboration with the Jamestown Sklalem tribe as two sovereigns, supporting the co-stewardship of our shared lands and resources. We urge citizens to learn more about the history of Native people and sovereign tribal nations here in our community and across Washington State and the United States. Thank you. Any comments from council?
Again, thank you very much.
My only comment, I guess, is that I am a direct descendant of the Elwah, of the Lower Elwah Klalem tribe. And that's always been a really proud part of who I am. And I implore everybody to learn everything they can about the local tribes of their area because it's a very rich history, and you can learn a lot. So thank you.
And I think somebody's online.
Yep. Lonnie, you are free to address the council now. Thank you.
Great. Can you hear me okay?
One moment. I think we need to turn up our volume on our end. Okay, go ahead.
All right. How about now?
Sounds great.
Okay, wonderful. Manu it tangin siomnis chaiacha, which is good evening, honored friends and relatives in Nuskayamutzen, or the Sklalem language, and just really proud of our local Squim government. One thing I would like to say really quick is that having this ongoing partnership has proven to us that it's that the Squim community is not just about acknowledging us one day of the year on Indigenous Peoples' Day, or one month a year in November, but you really do a good job to acknowledge us throughout the year and acknowledging our partnership, especially as the Jamestown tribe, being a neighboring government to you. And so I just want to throw, I know I'm not on the screen right now, but if you could see my hands are raised to you in great thanks just for the ongoing partnership and showing the coexistence value that you share with us. And we know that we can do more and be more successful together. We are better together, and that's what coexistence is all about. So I am just really grateful for the work that has been done, that is currently ongoing. And then, of course, more and better for the future work beyond us. So thank you for everything that you're doing that's going to have ripple effects for the next seven generations and beyond. Monse new hotting. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gunninger. And I wish you could be here for me to hand it off to you. That's one of my favorite things is interacting with you and being able to collaborate with you. So thank you so much for your time here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Alrighty. I was hoping the officers would come back for council comments. I think they're still out in the lobby. They can always listen to the meeting afterward. Does anybody have any comments for the life-saving award proclamations?
I would like to see. It is not easy to do CPR for seven minutes. And it is nerve-wracking to use an AED, especially if it's the first time you've done it on a person instead of a mannequin. So I really appreciate that they recognized the situation, called for help, and did the appropriate thing while help was arriving. I think that's commendable under the circumstances because they had so many other things going on, like they had to get down to, how did this happen? Why? And where's the person, you know, who did it? But, so I appreciate very much everything that they did. Thank you.
And I would just add that I think it's natural when you see something like that going on to run the other way. And when we have people that run towards an incident, it's, that's just amazing show of bravery. Also, I know that the family really appreciates the effort, and so thank you.
And I think just a very quick, I feel very grateful, and there really are no other words to describe the feeling of being able to just say, I get to work with these people. It's, they're just like top-tier, amazing human beings. And I am so grateful for all the time and effort that they put into their job, and knowing that every day could be a struggle and could be saving somebody's life. So thank you so much. Alrighty, we will move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. This is a limited public forum. Individuals providing public comment must not disrupt or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. This is not a forum for hate speech. The City of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support hate speech. Speakers are expected to be courteous and refrain from making hateful comments, sounds, or remarks. Any offensive words and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. The City of Squim stands firm in its commitment to being an inclusive community and rejects discrimination of any kind. I'm going to grab the comment sheet real quick. We had one individual signed up to provide comment online, but he is not online, and nobody signed up to provide public or in-person comment. So this concludes public comment. Hold on, he just rolled in. Mr. Curley, if you can address the council now, thank you.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much for your time. My name is Randall Curley. I'm the area manager for TNT Fireworks. And tonight I'm addressing one last time to hope that the minds would be changed on the fireworks issue that's going to be put through tonight. I'm concerned because of the lack of public notice on this. You know, I deal with a lot of city councils. And I work directly with the City of Port Orchard. A couple of years ago, when they decided that they would potentially look at this. And they have a great model. They actually put it out to the people in a survey, where they, they put it out on all their social media platforms. And it turns out that it actually came back that the people actually did not want to ban fireworks. And so the council abided by their wishes. And it's, it's kind of, it's disheartening that, that this has been pushed through so fast, and that there has been no real attempt, only the bare minimum, to address this issue within inside the city limits of Squim. And I understand you guys are going to do what you're going to do. But from an outsider's perspective, you have, you have plenty of time. And I would think that you would want to get this exactly right because the people are watching, the people are listening. And I just think that, that, that time, you have time to, to make it right, to do this correct. And so far, from, from what I've seen, this has not been correct. You have done very little to look at the public, to put it out to the public, to get public comment. I believe in 2016, you asked for the public to, to do a vote on this, and yet you did not do that this time. You're taking it upon yourself as a council to just push this through instead of actually getting the people, letting them have a say fully, not just in, oh, a random looking at a newspaper article, or the weekend before a council meeting to see, oh, my gosh, there's fireworks on. Oh, I have plans already. I can't speak. So I would hope that you would, that you would pause tonight and not let that, the, the actual new ordinance go into effect, and that you would put it to the people, make contact with the people, go out and actually ask what they have to think about it. Because the numbers that I said last time are correct. Upwards of 45% of your people actually participated in fireworks. And for them to have that gone, they're going to notice it. So anyways, thank you for your time, and I hope that that, that reason and common sense would prevail. Thank you so much for, for having me.
And that concludes public comment. All right. We have no public hearings scheduled. Going over the consent agenda, city clerk, could you read that over, please?
Tonight's consent agenda, the claim vouchers totaling $1,339,030.98. City council meeting minutes from September 23rd, 2024. SMC 8.20, fireworks and Sky Lanterns Code Amendment, ordinance adoption, requests to waive competitive bidding process to purchase vehicle, a resolution. The Youth Liaison Program Guideline Update, a resolution. And the City Shop Utilities Construction Recommendation to Contract Award.
And can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
And by unanimous approval, are there any objections? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. And moving on to general business, Sue with our third quarter financial report.
Good evening, council. Sue Hager, Administrative Services Director. For the record, third quarter financials. Lots of information you had in your packet. I hope I didn't overwhelm you. There's a couple of things that I wanted to just make a quick note of. In the presentation and in the snapshot document, you're going to see that our brand-new development reserve has a negative fund balance. Partially, that's because we were just estimating what this activity was going to be in the fund. But it's an also serious indicator that our fees on large developments, like rolling hills, are not adequate to cover the on-call engineering expenditures that we're paying for this site construction inspections. But do not fear, because our Public Works Director, I just saw him. He was here a second ago. He is working closely with our city engineer to assess a different way of coming up with those fees that are appropriate. And that maybe they don't cover the entire cost, but they don't leave us deep in the hole. So they're examining what's the best way to charge for those types of services. And so when I see you again at the first meeting in November, I will be bringing you hopefully revised site construction permit-related fees. So that's the first thing I wanted to address with you. The other one that's got me just a little concerned, and I'm going to keep a watch on it, is that the ending fund balance for our street operations fund is not within policy. And it is per our policy that city staff will bring a plan back to council And it is per our policy that city staff will bring a plan back to council to address that in terms of making a plan to to correct the noncompliance with policy. So I want to make sure that I get through the end of the year before we really assess the situation. And I would imagine that if at the end of the year, the condition still continues of a low fund balance, that I'll bring you a plan of some kind when I present later earlier in 2025. So I hope that that makes sense. The other thing, and again, our public works director is not here, but I really wanted to call attention to the graph regarding capital projects in millions. And you'll see that we are making records as a result of the capital projects being delivered. And even if you actually pull the the park purchase out of these numbers, we're still hitting $7 million in capital projects. So these public works people have been busy and they're killing it. So I just hope that you would acknowledge that they are a busy group and they are getting stuff done. Other than that, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Going once. Oh, Kathy.
It's not a question, but I just wanted to remind the newer council people that the fees you charge for permitting can only reflect what you spent on it. And it is not a make a money maker, correct, Sue?
It's it's typically not a money maker, but we should. If if council chooses to charge a fee that doesn't cover the cost of the service, then you're making a specific decision for taxpayer dollars to subsidize that service. And you can you can do that. That's that's policy. That's not typically how we roll, but there are cases where we charge fees that don't cover the cost of service because, for example, we have the low income discount for our utility customers. So if there's a reason and it's consistent with the city's goals, it's consistent with your goals. Let's say you want to spur economic activity by chopping permitting fees in half. Who knows? But there needs to be sort of a consensus from council and a common approach. And it's consistent with with the direction the city wants to go.
Thank you, Sue. I do think I do appreciate you looking at them every couple of years and updating them. I think that's good.
Yeah, we were a bit alarmed. One of the great things about getting new staff on board is that sometimes they see things that you've been staring at for five years and you haven't really realized. So it's great to have fresh eyes on these fees and charges. And that's what we're doing.
Any other questions from council?
Nope, just thank you for all the work you do. And your content is always no shortage of plenty of reading materials. Thank you. Yes, but it's 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 so good. Thank you, Sue.
You know, I'm always here for for questions for you guys as well. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Sue. Up next, our youth liaison report.
Hello, Malia Nelson, Youth Liaison for the purpose of the record. I get to use one of these fancy microphones today. Okay, so on October 26th, our high school leadership passed out our Boo Hunger bags. If you don't know, Boo Hunger is our Halloween food drive in collaboration with the Squim Food Bank. So these bags are handed out to the community and they're going to be collected October 31st. We did a record amount of bags this year, 500. So it's a lot of work from our leadership kids and we're hoping for a good turnout. Last weekend at the high school was also Halloween hallways. So each club from the high school has a room and they decorate it. And kids from the community can come and trick or treat throughout the hallways. That was a good success. We had a lot of turnout. The Squim Education Foundation fundraiser dinner was also on Saturday. They raised over $17,000 and that's going to go towards the foundation's grants. So that's really good news. Christmas lights are starting to be put up, so different volunteer groups are being organized. And you might see some pop up around the bank soon and throughout town. All of Helen Holler's fifth graders are currently today and Tuesday on a field trip to Lake Crescent. We started this, it's called the field trip is called Nature Bridge. And so the kids are bussed out to Lake Crescent and they learn about earth sciences and like plate tectonics. So that's going on today, that went on today and it's going on tomorrow. It's an annual thing. We just started it last year. So it's really, that's really exciting. Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you, Malia. Any questions from council?
The the Education Foundation dinner was a lot of fun and the middle school, high school band played and it was very nice.
Alrighty, up next, city manager report.
All right, well, council, you may remember your last meeting where I tried to catch up with three weeks of updates and it got a little long. So I reached out to the mayor and deputy mayor and sent them an email the next morning, kind of apologizing and asking them how if there was a better model or what they really wanted to hear. I could just sense and tell that was a little overbearing. So I heard back from the mayor and then we confirmed it in our agenda planning meeting that he he would like to, he wanted to try a new model, which was for me to put my city manager report in an email and send it to you by about noon, you know, by early afternoon, late morning of the day of the meeting. So you have that report in front of you and we'll make it part of the public record. If I think Heather's got some plans on to do that as well. So that that said, he said that way you can just hit highlights from that and or answer questions. So I will truly abbreviate this tonight. I wanted to first start off, it was hard not to say something when Sue was at the podium and the microphone. I really want to thank her. I mean, I've been doing this whatever 30, 40 years. And nobody loves to do quarterly variance report. You know, but of the seven revenues that she lists, you know, that we have in our budget, every one of them were we have beat budget on the revenue side from 2% to 5% and we have beat expenses by 2% on the cost side. So, I mean, it's just, I just wanted to acknowledge her and her team once again and you all as the fiscal kind of responsible party for, you know, overseeing our finances. We also met this past week to kick off the state auditor's office leadership where we had a teams meeting with them and they're they're always impressed with us and they're just getting started, but that got kicked off last week. So kudos to finance, to you all and to Sue for what we have there. So again, just a couple of items I wanted to pull off of my report that I've already sent to you. One is I wanted to thank those of you that attended the Ruth McCord Park unveiling or name dedication ceremony. It was a very touching ceremony. Family members were spot on. They had flown in from Hawaii and Utah and around. And of course, deputy mayor made some remarkable comments as well. So brought some people to tears there, Rachel. Thank you for your thoughtfulness and and those words. I wanted to invite council to, we have us all staff Halloween luncheon or whatever. It's a pretty good time right here in your council on Thursday from 12 to 1. You can wear a costume or not, but you'll see a lot of costumes. There's awards and it's a chilly. I'll send you the email if I haven't already, but it's worthwhile to, if you're available to swing by. Happy to see you. The other two bullet points I wanted just to highlight off of a long list of highlights was one, I think it's really worthwhile to note that the planning department has gone live with the Tyler, you know, development. So now we will be receiving all plans digitally, which is fantastic and be able to pass them around to the different to the different departments and different individuals. And the contractors can pay their fees online, et cetera, et cetera. We'll be able to track them as will the the contractors or developers. They can see all that at any time without having to come in and call or ask or whatever. It's really, we'll need to give you a dog and pony show on the functionality of that software. But a big lift by DCD Group, of course, Lindsay and team. But and Travis did a lot of work on that over the last six months. So thank you to all of them. And my last, I thought it's worthwhile to always point out Megan is doing great work and submitted almost a million dollar application for a hazard mitigation grant for a backup microgrid solution at Kerry Blake. So we'll see where that goes. But we passed the first round and then we're asked to participate in the second round. So we'll hopefully that will go through. And I think I already talked about Ruth's Ruth McCord Park. But as you know, Parks, Hannah and team and Barb, they're a lot, just a lot of effort. Yeah, into that. So I think I'll try to keep it short and stop there. Otherwise, we're back into it. Any questions by council? All right.
No, no questions, but just a comment on the Ruth McCord event was really well put on and lucked out with the blue skies and and kudos on you for queuing up those cows to show up right.
Did you like that? So it's not easy to put a program together like that, but I was glad they were compliant and totally bought into the the program details.
I'm really glad I was there also. And I brought my kids because it was right after school and they were having a blast. They really enjoyed it. And thank you all for having cookies because that's what kept them work, sitting through the whole thing. I said, you, if you, they had one and then they were begging me for a second one. And I said, no, you can't have another one until all the speaking is done. So if you want another one, you have to sit nicely. Thank you. And they were, they were having a great time. And definitely the comments there, we're talking about Ruth and her love for children and and the elderly and and this total love of community. And that really resonated with my daughter. She was sitting in my lap and when they were talking about kids, she was like, that's me. So thank you. Thank you. I just, what a gift for our community. Thank you so much, staff and everybody. And I look forward to the next time we all get together there. Thanks.
It was due to your support. We came to you two or three times over that 18 months to get to the finish line. And so I really appreciate you considering our proposals and our our stretch there. So, yeah, thank you.
Not for overkill or anything, but I do remember Mrs. McCord as a customer when I worked at Safeway. And she was just, as her daughter described, I always enjoyed waiting on her because she was never in a hurry. She never got mad, even if you run her stuff up wrong. And she was just always very kind and thoughtful. So it was nice to hear that from our kids too and to know that her, you know, memory will be carried on that way.
Thank you.
Alrighty, moving on to the city council committee reports. Are there any reports? I see you. I know you got one.
You're looking at me. You look straight at me. Yes, I went ahead and typed up some notes, as it were, of the Parks, Auburn Rec Board and the Squim Arts Commission. Squim Arts Commission just met today and I had to dash out while they, at the end, at about 4:25 because of our closed sessions. So I have some rough drafts that I tonight will be just brushing up and sending out to Heather so that you all can see. So I don't have them here in front of me, but you all will have them and and they'll be available to the public. Long and short of it is both those, the both board and the commission are doing really, really amazing work. I'm so honored to be on both of those and there's great people representing. Just really brief again, WASL, we're done meeting in person. And so now we're in the homework phase and I look forward to collaborating with Lindsay Samuel, the Director of Department of Community Development on how affordable housing and the comp plan can are all overlapping and and continue to work with Port Angeles Councilor Drew Schwab on our capstone project for affordable housing on the peninsula and really just looking at how to keep moving that project, keep moving that. Very important, but it feels so, can feel at times so nebulous and like in terms of tangible steps forward. And so we hope that we we hope that our work will help foster more conversation and potentially put together some more next steps. But we look forward to doing that in collaboration with all the work that's already happening on the peninsula. So thank you. And that's all I have for now.
Any other reports? Going once, one, twice? All right, we are on to open council discussion. Is there anything that anybody wants to bring up? Kathy.
Well, since I'm the person that brought forward the the stoppage of the sale of fireworks at a citizen and a group's request, I just, I don't know if Mr. Cleary is.
Curly.
Curly is still listening, but we don't usually respond when it's the citizens' turn to speak. Now, this is our turn to speak and I just wanted to say I only got emails in favor of fireworks sales. I got two or three, period. I received many, many emails, and I'm sure the rest of council did too, from people asking us to stop the sale of fireworks for various reasons. So I don't, and we discussed it at three separate meetings. I don't feel like it was rushed. I don't feel like we had our minds made up ahead of time. I think the citizens in Squim know what's going on and I and I think the majority of them knew that we were thinking about it and discussing it. It was in the newspaper and people talk amongst themselves. So I just wanted to say that I wouldn't worry about anybody saying that they didn't know about it because I think the rest of you got emails also for other people asking us to stop selling the fireworks. Thank you very much.
Anything else for open council discussion? Yes.
And I would support what you say, Kathy, and also that our citizens are very different than those of Paul's Bow. So for us to have a different outcome is certainly reasonable. But I wanted to tell you that I went to the Trinity House fundraiser on Friday night and it was very nice. The food was provided by the Lincoln School. Dang it, the Wolf, it's the kids that did the food and it was really good. And then they had some of the students from the Port Angeles Symphony playing music during the event. I'm not sure how much they raised yet, but I did have a conversation with Sharon and she sat there in conversations with HUD about the house on Fifth Avenue, the housing project they have there, the Sun Belt. It used to be a nursing home and now it's part, they own it and that they want to build up to 32 apartments on it through a program with HUD. So she'll be coming to talk to you about that at some point. But I'm just like, you know, what you were talking about harmony, where it just feels like when we work on housing that we're not getting anywhere, but we've done a lot of stuff and we've talked a lot about it. And then stuff is slowly starting to happen. We just have to have those patience and keep pushing forward. So thank you.
Anything else? Malia.
Hello, Malia Nelson for the purpose of the record. So it seems like as a council, we're moving more towards written reports, like for the city manager and for committee. Is that something we'd like to do with the Youth Liaison Report as well?
I mean, just personally speaking, I think it's okay if you do, but I also really love hearing your report.
Okay.
So should we give Malia guidance?
Well, I just didn't know if like that was something we wanted to be unified, but I'm totally fine with continuing giving a verbal report. But I can also write one up each meeting as well, if that's helpful.
How do we think? Are we fine with verbal or would you like a written report also?
I'm I'm fine with the verbal. And, you know, maybe if you have something important to share, you could submit in writing if you're not going to be here.
Okay, thank you.
Is that good? That's helpful? Okay. Alrighty, any other open council discussion? I will say it is getting wet and. I will say it is getting wet and cold, so please drive safely. And very dark outside, so please drive safe. And.
I have one more piece, quick question, quick um, idea. Um, I am contemplating, um, and I, I haven't reached out to any of you about this at all. Um, the thought um, has been percolating in my mind um, since the end of WA Selly. And just because I feel that, I mean, it's, we, we do, we do have the ability to engage with our constituents, with the, with the community through email and, and vice versa, and such. And folks do sometimes come to council meetings, but I'm contemplating, um, just thinking out loud. Maybe um, we could do some sort of like, once a month, um, coffee with the council kind of event. Not a, not, um, and, and do it in such a way where we frame it, where there might be a topic once a month. I'm just suggesting, um, I don't know, um, like I said, I haven't reached out to any of you officially about it. I think a couple of meetings back, um, Brandon suggested he was contemplating coffee with the mayor again, but I didn't hear any update about that. So maybe it doesn't have to be all on one counselor. Maybe it could be coffee with council and it, it could be, um, we, we, we coordinate amongst ourselves so that um, one person, one or two or maybe three, but no more than three, folks are there to just have a really um, casual conversation, but guided under a particular topic once a month. I don't know, just a thought. Um, what are you, what are you thinking?
I would say I'm very engaged with staff and everything going on. And even with how engaged I am, I wouldn't be comfortable with that because I'm not the subject matter expert. And I also wouldn't want to feel like it's a burden to put on staff either. Um, if they had the time and capacity for that, that'd be great, but I wouldn't want to fall and tell them either.
You're saying it would involve the staff?
It wouldn't, would it? Uh, that, that's a good question. I don't think it would have to. It could be just a um, big post-it note, the giant um, post-it note easel space where we could, as counselors, just take down comments and questions. And then we handle all of the um, processing of that information onto cities, um, staff, undeniably through Matt. Sorry, Matt. So maybe it's just adding extra work? I don't know. I'm, I was just curious. Um, and I'm sorry, maybe I should have saved this comment or question for when Brandon was here, um, just to know what, what he, where he was with bringing coffee with the mayor back. But um, I see Malia's hand.
Um, would that be possible with like, the public law or public information records that we have to keep? Like if we did a sort of more casual sort of meeting, would that be allowed within those laws?
Go ahead.
As long as it's not an official meeting, which would be a quorum where we discuss business, then the public records act does not apply. So it would be okay if we follow the right guidelines. Did you have more?
No, that was all.
But I do think, you know, engaging with staff is one thing, but understanding policy, which is our work. And hearing from community like Kathy, hearing from people about the fireworks, you know, making spaces where it's more comfortable and people can come and talk to us. I know I get plenty of emails, but I also get stopped in the grocery store or in other places, especially QFC for some reason. But it would be good to have more opportunities for people to feel comfortable to talk to us about policy issues. And maybe making that distinction. And it could be like having coffee at Rain Shadow or Hurricane or don't want to pick one coffee shop over the other. Maybe do a tour around all of them.
There you go.
And I would say too, if people just had like concerns or, like I'm a person that likes to learn about something and then come back with an answer if possible. And so I would totally feel comfortable, like, let me know what your concerns are or what your feedback is. And I can, you know, research that and come back to you. But I think that on the spot, if it's something that I'm not well versed in, I'd feel really uncomfortable not being ample to answer their question then and there. So, but I like the idea of just like hanging out and like if you have a question or something to bring to us. And maybe you don't like to email people or maybe you have a hard time reaching us by phone. Because I'm definitely an email person, but I also know that that's not completely accessible to everybody. And so if we wanted to start something like that, where it could be accessible and people could come ask questions with the caveat of we might not be able to answer everything right now. I'd, I'd be okay with that.
Yeah, absolutely. That would be, that would absolutely be um, a big part of how we frame it. Is just to come and have a casual, casual conversation with the counselors. Um, we could have it driven around specific issues or we could leave it open-ended. But definitely with the caveat that um, it would be a, a, another way to engage directly with us. And that we would take questions and comments and um, concerns that people bring to us. And I'm going to use one of my terms, do, do some conversation harvesting. So just like people talk and then someone's just taking notes like crazy about all the things that are coming up. And then we can um, get people's emails and then follow up with them after the fact. So it'd just be another way to have a back and forth conversation, engaging the subject matter experts as needed. Or have our fact sheets um, on speed dial um, to, to have that kind of conversation. I'm seeing more, more folks look like they want to talk, so I'm going to stop.
Oh, I just wanted to say, we bought our house and then we didn't move here for two years because my husband had to retire. But we came out for Thanksgiving and I went to coffee with the mayor at the Black Bear Diner and it was Mr. Smith, Dennis Smith. Very, very nice guy. And he had the um, not a public works director, but somebody else with him. It wasn't you, it wasn't you Matt, because I hadn't met you yet. But it was very interesting, but people, um, at that time, people were sharing about the Matt clinic. And there were some people there that got up and they said, uh, you know, I'm an addict, I dress just like you, I have a job. I, you know, I thought it was very informative, but I don't know that I would put myself in that position. And I know that um, Mayor Omar Cost tried doing it on the radio. So that was, um, you know, I mean, that was an option also. So there's different ways to do it. I myself would not feel comfortable doing it. But if you guys want to do it, I'll back you up.
Excuse me? Um, I'm, I'm feeling inspired. I, I'd be willing to hold, hold space on the first Monday of the month at a time that made sense for folks. That's, um, but I'm also willing to explore other Mondays except for uh, the third Monday because that one's already full of lots of meetings. But yes, I'm open and willing to, to do it and I'd welcome other counselors to join me. I, I'm seeing Matt. He looks like you want to talk.
Well, no, I, um, I'm, it's great to hear everybody's comments and I, I think you and I talked in R101. And you know, that I wouldn't, like many of you, uh, I'm a believer in subject matter expertise. I'm a generalist personally, but I know I've got a great team that I refer to always. So I always get it wrong just a little bit and I don't want to be held accountable for that little bit of being wrong. So I, like Rachel, um, I, I'm glad it's council. I think it would, if you choose to do it, it's great for the community to know the difference between operations and policy. And I think that, you know, would be a worthwhile um, outcome of it perhaps. But for, for sure, I can probably tell you how my senior management team feels, those that are still here. Most have left because of that. It was just a really, you know, a lot of PTSD, a lot of, uh, that was, that's why I'm here unfortunately. I had nothing to do with it, but I, you know, I just heard there was an opening. So anyway, uh, we all know some history here and I, I think if you all want to do it, that would be great. My guess is the senior management team would probably rather not participate. So, yeah.
Definitely didn't want to make an extra work for the, for you all because you all are already doing so much. But it would just be another way for us as counselors to engage with the public, record their concerns and then run it through the regular channels that we already use for public input.
And I don't, because it's policy, if it's not policy, that it does go to staff. But it's policy, we're the regular channel, right?
If you're phrasing this as more of a, this is a listening session rather than a, the expectation that they would come and get an answer.
Good point.
I was also thinking how if we did end up being able to bring back answers, how educational it could be for a lot of people that don't understand a lot of what goes on in the city and like the policymaking side of it.
Yeah, that's something, um, thank you. That's something I've learned from you a lot. Just our role as counselors feels like um, we, liaising between what happens at the city, how, the role we play and then how things are in the community because of X, Y, and Z. And that's, and there, there's process. So it's just about helping folks understand better about their government, local government and how to be engaged. This has been a really excellent conversation. Thank you all very much for having it with me. I think we should table it until the next time that we're all seven together and maybe revisit. And in the meantime, if, uh, check your Monday calendar. That's when I'm available to hold this. Um, and uh, yeah, maybe we can put something out there. Thank you.
Uh, anything else for open council discussion? Going once? Going twice?
Oh, no, no.
Nope.
It's the, it's the next.
Okay, okay, three. You're cut off. Okay. Next is the planning. So the agenda planning meeting. Kathy, are you available for that? Do you want to go?
Last time I couldn't remember who said they were going to go.
Vicky, yeah, it was Vicky last time. Tuesday, November 5th, 2:00 PM.
That's Guy Fawkes Day.
It's also election day.
Alrighty, so I don't know if Brandon will be there. I plan to be there. And Kathy, she's putting it in her calendar right now. I'm seeing it. She's committing. Okay. Alright, our next regular council meeting is Tuesday. I know the calendar's throwing everybody off. Tuesday, November 12th. Right now, 6:00 PM. I'm not sure if any work sessions or anything will come up.
I won't be here and I won't be able to call in either.
You're preemptively excused. Alright, that's all I have for you tonight. I motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I second it.
Kathy seconds. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Drive safe, everybody.